The House will come to order. Prayer by the Chaplain.
Let us be in this time and this space of beginning exhale. Transforming source of all history and mystery. We gather in this digital space of governance today, embracing our call to serve in this unprecedented time of new beginnings. We give thanks for this opportunity granted to us to be part of something greater than any newspaper or media headline, to be something broader than the weariness we are all feeling in the present moment. Yes, we give thanks for being entrusted with this work of civil service for just this precious time in history. Stir within us a vision to see beyond the immediate to the generations that will follow long after us. Give us vision for a future where all constituents' livelihoods are valued and cared for. Rekindle within us a passion and a compassion for that greater good and renew in us a desire to act, speak, and discern with hearts of humility. O source of wisdom and integrity, place a spirit of civility and reconciliation within us. Where there is self-righteousness, place humility. Where there is hardness of heart, place perspective. Where there is apathy, place empathy. And where there is self-interest, place communal well-being. Infinite light beckon us back within the folds of your justice, love, and mercy, where we once again are renewed into the elected officials worthy of our community's support, elected officials whose devotion is for the common good and service towards those most vulnerable. And beckon us forward to the possibility of a people and a state made whole, united in our differences. It is with gratitude and hope we pray to you today. Amen.
The Chaplain for today is Reverend Amanda Luneman from United Methodist Minneapolis, Minnesota. Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the very love of our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A copy of the proclamation from the Governor is on each member's desk and also online. Right before the Clerk begins taking the role, I'd like to introduce our new legislative clerk, Kathy Carlson. The Clerk will take the role and as he reads the names for members who are not in the chamber, please state your location, your name and your location. The Clerk will take the role.
Akam.
Akam, St. Paul, present.
Akam, St. Paul, present. Albright.
Albright, Spring Lake Township, present.
Albright, Spring Lake Township, present. Anderson.
Anderson, St. Paul, present.
Anderson, St. Paul, present. Backer. Backer.
Backer, Browns Valley, present.
Backer, Browns Valley, present. Bonner.
Bonner, St. Paul, present.
Bonner, St. Paul, present. Barr.
Barr, Roseville, present.
Barr, Roseville, present. Baker. Baker, St. Paul, present. Becker Finn.
Becker Finn, St. Paul, present.
Becker Finn, St. Paul, present. Bennett.
Bennett, Albert Lee, present.
Bennett, Albert Lee, present. Bernardi.
Bernardi, St. Paul, present.
Bernardi, St. Paul, present. Bierman.
Bierman, St. Paul, present.
Bierman, St. Paul, present. Bowe.
Bowe, Chanhassen, present.
Bowe, Chanhassen, present. Brand.
Brand, St. Paul, present.
Brand, St. Paul, present. Cantrell.
Cantrell, St. Paul, present.
Cantrell, St. Paul, present. Carlson A.
Carlson A, Bloomington, present.
Carlson A, Bloomington, present. Carlson L.
Carlson L, St. Paul, present.
Carlson L, St. Paul, present. Christensen. Christensen. Claflin.
Claflin, St. Paul, present.
Claflin, St. Paul, present. Considine.
Considine, Mankato, present.
Considine, Mankato, present. Daniels. Daniels.
Daniels, Faribault, present.
Daniels, Faribault, present. Dowd.
Dowd, Crown, present.
Dowd, Crown, present. Davids. Davids, St. Paul, present. Daveney.
Daveney, St. Paul, present.
Daveney, St. Paul, present. Dean.
Dean, St. Paul, present.
Dean, St. Paul, present. Damuth. Damuth, St. Paul, present. Detmer.
Detmer, Forest Lake, present.
Detmer, Forest Lake, present. Draskowski.
Draskowski, St. Paul, present.
Draskowski, St. Paul, present. Eklund.
Eklund, St. Paul, present.
Eklund, St. Paul, present. Edelson.
Edelson, St. Paul, present.
Edelson, St. Paul, present. Elkins.
Elkins, St. Paul, present.
Elkins, St. Paul, present. Erickson.
Erickson, St. Paul, present.
Erickson, St. Paul, present. Fabian.
Fabian, Rosel, present.
Fabian, Rosel, present. Fisher.
Fisher, St. Paul, present.
Fisher, St. Paul, present. Franzen. Excused. Freiberg.
Freiberg, St. Paul, present.
Freiberg, St. Paul, present. Garofalo.
Garofalo, Farmington, present.
Garofalo, Farmington, present. Gomez.
Gomez, St. Paul, present.
Gomez, St. Paul, present. Green.
Green, Foster, present.
Green, Foster, present. Garosel.
Garosel, Clearbrook, present.
Garosel, Clearbrook, present. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, Glenco, present.
Grunhagen, Glenco, present. Gunther. Gunther. Haley. Haley, St. Paul, present. Halverson. Halverson, St. Paul, present. Hamilton.
Hamilton, Mountain Lake, present.
Hamilton, Mountain Lake, present. Hanson.
Hanson, St. Paul, present.
Hanson, St. Paul, present. Hassan.
Hassan Hopkins, present.
Hassan Hopkins, present. Hausmann.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present. Heinrich.
Heinrich, Bradenton, present.
Heinrich and Bradenton, present. Heinzman.
Heinzman, St. Paul, present.
Heinzman, St. Paul, present. Herr.
Herr, St. Paul, present.
Herr, St. Paul, present. Hertos.
Hertos, Scottsdale, present.
Hertos, Scottsdale, present. Hornstein.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present. Howard.
Howard, St. Paul, present.
Howard, St. Paul, present. Hewitt.
Hewitt, St. Paul, present.
Hewitt, St. Paul, present. Johnson.
Johnson, St. Paul, present.
Johnson, St. Paul, present. Jordan.
Jordan, St. Paul, present.
Jordan, St. Paul, present. Jurgens.
Jurgens, Cottage Grove, present.
Jurgens, Cottage Grove, present. Keel. Keel. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, St. Paul, present.
Cleavorn, St. Paul, present. Cagle.
Cagle, St. Paul, present.
Cagle, St. Paul, present. Katiza Whittoon.
Katiza Whittoon, Eden Prairie, present.
Katiza Whittoon, Eden Prairie, present. Koznick.
Koznick, Lakeville, present.
Koznick, Lakeville, present. Creshaw.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present. Kunish Poudine.
Kunish Poudine, New Brighton, present.
Kunish Poudine, New Brighton, present. Lehman. Lehman, St. Paul, present. Lee.
Lee, St. Paul, present.
Lee, St. Paul, present. Lesh.
Lesh, St. Paul, present.
Lesh, St. Paul, present. Liebling. What? Liebling. Excused. Lean.
Lean, Moorhead, present.
Lean, Moorhead, present. Lilly.
Lilly, St. Paul, present.
Lilly, St. Paul, present. Lippert.
Lippert, St. Paul, present.
Lippert, St. Paul, present. Listlegard.
Listlegard, St. Paul, present.
Listlegard, St. Paul, present. Long. Long, St. Paul, present. Lucero.
Lucero, St. Paul, present.
Lucero, St. Paul, present. Lewick.
Lewick, Aiken, present.
Lewick, Aiken, present. Mahoney. Mahoney.
Mahoney, St. Paul, present.
Mahoney, St. Paul, present. Mann. Excused. Mariani.
Mariani, St. Paul, present.
Mariani, St. Paul, present. Markwart.
Markwart, Glendon, present.
Markwart, Glendon, present. Mason.
Mason, St. Paul, present.
Mason, St. Paul, present. McDonald.
McDonald, Delano, present.
McDonald, Delano, present. Mecklen.
Mecklen, Becker Township, present.
Mecklen, Becker Township, present. Miller. Miller, St. Paul, present. Moeller.
Moeller, St. Paul, present.
Moeller, St. Paul, present. Moran.
Moran, St. Paul, present.
Moran, St. Paul, present. Morrison.
Morrison, St. Paul, present.
Morrison, St. Paul, present. Mudson.
Mudson, Lincoln Township, present.
Mudson, Lincoln Township, present. Murphy.
Murphy, St. Paul, present.
Murphy, St. Paul, present. Nash. Nash.
Nash, Waconia, present.
Nash, Waconia, present. Nelson M.
Nelson M, St. Paul, present.
Nelson M, St. Paul, present. Nelson N.
Nelson N, Clover Township, present.
Nelson N, Clover Township, present. New. New, St. Paul, present. Nor.
Nor, St. Paul, present.
Nor, St. Paul, present. Nornis. Nornis.
Fergus, Fergus, Nornis, Fergus Falls, present.
Nornis, Fergus Falls, present. Navatney. Navatney.
Navatney, Elk River, present.
Navatney, Elk River, present. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, Sartell, present.
O'Driscoll, Sartell, present. Olson.
Olson, St. Paul, present.
Olson, St. Paul, present. O'Neill.
O'Neill, Maple Lake, present.
O'Neill, Maple Lake, present. Palowski.
Palowski, Winona, present.
Palowski, Winona, present. Purcell.
Purcell, St. Paul, present.
Purcell, St. Paul, present. Petersburg.
Petersburg, St. Paul, present.
Petersburg, St. Paul, present. Pearson.
Pearson, Rochester Township, present.
Pearson, Rochester Township, present. Pinto.
Pinto, St. Paul, present.
Pinto, St. Paul, present. Poppy.
Poppy, Austin, present.
Poppy, Austin, present. Poston.
Poston, Lakeshore, present.
Poston, Lakeshore, present. Pryor. Pryor. Quam.
Quam, Byron, present.
Quam, Byron, present. Richardson.
Richardson, St. Paul, present.
Richardson, Mendota Heights, present. Robbins. Robbins, St. Paul, present. Runbeck. Runbeck, St. Paul, present. Sandell.
Sandell, St. Paul, present.
Sandell, St. Paul, present. Sansstead. Sansstead. Sauk.
Sansstead, St. Paul, present.
Sansstead, St. Paul, present. Sauk.
Sauk, Rochester, present.
Sauk, Rochester, present. Schumacher.
Schumacher, St. Paul, present.
Schumacher, St. Paul, present. Schultz.
Schultz, Garden Township, present.
Schultz, Garden Township, present. Scott.
Scott, Andover, present.
Scott, Andover, present. Stevenson.
Stevenson, St. Paul, present.
Stevenson, St. Paul, present. Sundine. Sundine. Swazinski. Swazinski. Tabkey.
Tabkey, St. Paul, present.
Tabkey, St. Paul, present. Tice. Tice. Torkelson.
Torkelson, Hanska, present.
Torkelson, Hanska, present. Erdahl.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present. Vang.
Vang, St. Paul, present.
Vang, St. Paul, present. Vogel.
Vogel, Howding, present.
Vogel, Howding, present. Wagenius.
Wagenius, Minneapolis, present.
Wagenius, Minneapolis, present. Waslewic.
Waslewic, St. Paul, present.
Waslewic, St. Paul, present. West.
West Blaine, present.
West Blaine, present. Winkler. Winkler, St. Paul, present. Walgamod.
St. Paul, present.
Walgamod, St. Paul, present. Jean Jay.
Jean Jay, St. Paul, present.
Jean Jay, St. Paul, present. Jean T.
Jean T, St. Paul, present.
Jean T, St. Paul, present. Yuakim.
Yuakim, St. Paul, present.
Yuakim, St. Paul, present. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, St. Paul, present. Christensen.
Christensen, St. Paul, present.
Christensen, St. Paul, present. Gunther.
Gunther, Fairmont, present.
Gunther, Fairmont, present. Keel.
Keel, Hammond Township, present.
Keel, Hammond Township, present. Pryor. Pryor. Sundine. Sundine. Swazinski. Swazinski. Tice. 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 Tice, St. Cloud, present. Swazinski.
Northern Township, present.
Sundine.
A quorum is present and pursuant to Minnesota statutes 2018, section 3.073, I declare the House organized for this special session. Representative Winkler offers the following motion. The Chief Clerk will read the motion.
Winkler moves that the Chief Clerk be and is hereby instructed to inform the Senate and the Governor by message that the House of Representatives is now duly organized pursuant to law for the seventh special session.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, I ask for a yes vote on this ceremonial type of motion and I'd like to hear the Chief Clerk say "seventh special session" quickly three times.
Any discussion on the Winkler motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. Introduction of bills. The following House files have been offered for introduction today. The Chief Clerk will report the House files and give them their first reading.
Introduction of first reading of House files 1 through 44.
First reading, House files 1 through 44. Representative Winkler makes the following motion.
Pursuant to Article 4, Section 19 of the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, Winkler moves that the rule therein be suspended and an urgency be declared and that the rules of the House be so far suspended so that House File Number 19 be given its second, third readings and be placed upon its final passage.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this is the Technical Corrections Bill, which has been agreed upon by all four legislative caucuses and the Governor, and I ask for a yes vote.
Any discussion on the Winkler motion? Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, members. I would recommend a yes vote.
All those in favor of the Winkler motion? It has a mandatory roll call, so we will go ahead and proceed to a roll call on the Winkler motion.
Akam.
Akam, aye.
Akam, aye. Albright.
Albright, aye.
Albright, aye. Anderson. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Backer.
Backer, aye.
Backer, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker. Baker, aye. Becker Finn.
Becker Finn, aye.
Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bowe.
Bowe, aye.
Bowe, aye. Brand.
Brand, aye.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L. Carlson L. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Dowd.
Dowd, aye.
Dowd, aye. Davids. Davids, aye. Daveney. Daveney.
Daveney, aye.
Daveney, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Draskowski. Draskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Erickson.
Erickson, aye.
Erickson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher. Fisher. Franzen. Excused. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Garosel.
Garosel, aye.
Garosel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley. Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzman.
Heinzman, aye.
Heinzman, aye. Herr. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye. Hertos.
Hertos, aye.
Hertos, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard. Howard.[1713.60]
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Whittoon.
Katiza Whittoon, aye.
Katiza Whittoon, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Creshaw.
Creshaw, aye.
Creshaw, aye. Kunis Poudine.
Kunis Poudine, aye.
Kunis Poudine, aye. Lehman. Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesh.
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling. Excused. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Luick.
Luick, aye.
Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, aye.
Mahoney, aye. Mann. Excused. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald. McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller. Miller, aye. Moeller.
Moeller, aye.
Moeller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash.
Nash, aye.
Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor.
Nor, aye.
Nor, aye. Nornus.
Nornus, aye.
Nornus, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, aye.
Navatney, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, St. Paul, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck. Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sansstead.
Sansstead, aye.
Sansstead, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sandin.
Sandin, St. Paul, aye.
Sandin, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice. Tice. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdol.
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 Erdol, aye.
Erdol, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslowick.
Waslowick, aye.
Waslowick, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Walgamot.
Aye!
Walgamot. Walgamot. Jean Jay.
Jean Jay, aye.
Jean Jay, aye. Jean T.
Jean T, aye.
Jean T, aye. Yuakim. Yuakim. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L. Aye.
Carlson L, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Tice. Tice. Walgamot.
Walgamot, aye.
Walgamot, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Tice. Tice, aye.
The Winkler motion prevails. The clerk will give House File 19 its second reading.
Second reading, House File Number 19.
Second reading. Representative Winkler. To your bill.
Madam Speaker, members, this bill contains several provisions that make technical and other small changes to existing law. The bill extends the date on an LC CMR appropriation, which allows the ELSA CMR bill that was enacted in 2018, which allowed a local soil and water conservation district in Crow Wing County and Aiken County to continue until 2022. Representative Hanson is available to address any questions related to those provisions. The next provision is a Department of Human Services Technical Corrections Bill, an extension on telehealth. This portion combines three different items. They're all urgent: Human Services Technical Corrections, Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Reimbursement Language, and an extension of telehealth by residency. Representative Liebling is available to answer questions on that provision. The Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinics, making navigating mental health and substance use disorder systems easier via comprehensive coordinated and integrated care model, is something that Representative Bierman can discuss. And again, on the extension of telehealth by residency is a set of provisions that Representative Schultz is available to discuss or answer questions on. The next section of the bill is a Workers' Comp Advisory Council set of recommendations. This portion of the bill contains recommendations from the Workers' Comp Advisory Council adopted in the spring of 2020. Because the Advisory Council requires its recommendations on workers' comp reforms to be on a consensus basis, all controversial provisions have been stripped out, and this bill should be non-controversial in its entirety. Representative Sandin is available to address questions or discuss those provisions. The next section is updates to assisted living licensure. This proposal includes updates to the 2019 Elder Care and Vulnerable Adults Protection Act that established the framework for assisted living licensure. The changes include technical changes, provisions that were inadvertently left out of the 2019 proposal, and some new sections. Representative Schultz is available to answer questions or discuss those provisions of the bill. Last, Madam Speaker, we have a notary bill extension. This is a bill that we passed in the fifth special session in October. It was carried by Representative Freiberg, and it allows for remote notarial services. And when that was passed, the expiration was January 6, 2021, so these provisions extend that bill until March 31 of 2021. And Representative Freiberg is available to answer questions or discuss that section of the bill.
Discussion to the bill. The member from Wabashaw, Representative Driskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wonder if the author of the bill would yield.
He will yield. Representative Driskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Winkler, what is the subject of this bill?
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, Representative Driskowski, I don't have a copy of the bill in front of me, but the nature of the bill is similar to what we passed in the floor, which is a series of corrections related to past legislation.
Representative Driskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, Madam Speaker, members, I see at least four different subjects here: Workman's Comp and HHS Conglomeration, Assisted Living and Notary. Members, the single-subject clause of the Constitution is again getting run over in people's haste in order to rush things through here. I think this is sloppy legislating. It's lazy legislating, and we're better than this. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Further discussion to the bill. There are no amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill its third reading.
Third reading, House File Number 19.
Third reading. Any further discussion to the bill? Seeing none, the clerk will take the roll on the bill.
Acem.
Acem, aye.
Acem, aye. Albright.
Albright, aye.
Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Becker.
Becker, aye.
Becker, aye. Bonner. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker. Baker, aye. Becker Finn.
Becker Finn, aye.
Becker Finn, aye. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo.
Bo, aye.
Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson A.
Carlson A, aye.
Carlson A, aye. Carlson L.
Carlson L, aye.
Carlson L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Considine.
Considine, aye.
Considine, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Dowd.
Dowd, aye.
Dowd, aye. Davids. Davids, aye. Daveney. Daveney. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Draskowski. Draskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Erickson.
Erickson, aye.
Erickson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen. Excused. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, aye.
Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley. Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr. Herr. Hertas.
Hertas, no.
Hertas, no. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, aye.
Jurgens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katiza Whittoon.
Katiza Whittoon, St. Paul, aye.
Katiza Whittoon, aye. Koznick. Koznick. Creesha.
Creesha, aye.
Creesha, aye. Kunish Poudin.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kunish Poudin.
Kunish Poudin, aye.
Kunish Poudin, aye. Lehman. Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, aye.
Lee, aye. Lesh.
Lesh, aye.
Lesh, aye. Liebling. Excused. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Luick.
Luick, aye.
Luick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, yes.
Mahoney, aye. Mann. Excused. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, aye.
Mason, aye. McDonald.
McDonald, no.
McDonald, no. Mecklen.
Mecklen, no.
Mecklen, no. Miller. Miller, no. Moller.
Moller, aye.
Moller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, no.
Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash.
Nash, no.
Nash, no. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor.
Nor, aye.
Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatney.
Navatney, no.
Navatney, no. O'Driscoll. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, aye.
Olson, aye. O'Neil.
O'Neil, no.
O'Neil, no. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robins. Robins, aye. Runbeck. Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandsted.
Sandsted, aye.
Sandsted, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, aye.
Sauk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz.
Schultz, aye.
Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundine.
Sundine, aye.
Sundine, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice. Tice. Tice, aye. Torkelson. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdal.
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 Erdal, aye.
Erdal, aye. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.
Vogel, aye. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslewic.
Waslewic, aye.
Waslewic, aye. West.
West, aye.
West, aye. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wogomot.
Wogomot, aye.
Wogomot, aye. Jean J.
Jean J, aye.
Jean J, aye. Jean T.
Jean T, aye.
Jean T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Dafne.
Dafne, aye.
Dafne, aye. Herr.
Herr, aye.
Herr, aye.
Heinrich changes from aye to no.
Heinrich changes from aye to no.
Bo changes from aye to no.
Bo changes from aye to no.
Grassel changes from aye to no.
Grassel changes from aye to no.
Clerk will close the roll. There being 117 ayes and 14 nays, the bill is passed and its title agreed to. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. This is to notify you that the Senate is now duly organized for the 2027th Special Session pursuant to the Minnesota Constitution and Minnesota statutes. Message is signed Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate.
Members, we are waiting for a work product from the reviser, so we may take a recess here in a couple of moments. We will check in with some folks here in the chamber and make an announcement shortly. Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, we're going to move a brief recess to allow for three retirement speeches. And the tradition is that we do those during a recess, not during an official session of the House. So we will recess, do those speeches, and then reconvene. Madam Speaker, I move a recess to the call of the Chair.
Representative Winkler moves a recess to the call of the Chair. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The House stands in recess.